The room view on here, give me one second because I know people will tell me. So Jacqueline, if you clicked your view to pin to us, I think then it would work. See if you go up to my view.
Yeah.
Sometimes, because when I do speaker, it always goes to you and I don't understand, it should go to. It's not the end of the world, but it's just better than looking at two blocks, but.
Oh, um, hold on.
Okay, well, it's not, not a big difference in here, it doesn't really matter, but um. All right, with that, then I would like to call to order, I guess, call to order, the public hearing for the two draft ordinances. For Monday, April 24th at 6:30, let's please all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is sans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, so I'd like to welcome everybody here today. I have two important ordinances before the Board of Selectmen for review and discussion. We, today's public hearing is really just to get feedback from the public, so it's not really a back and forth conversation, but it's for you to give your views on the draft ordinances that were posted on the website. We have a meeting immediately following this meeting where the board will have a discussion. We will not be voting on any of the ordinance this evening, just so you know that, so there's not going to be any final discussion, this is just to get the view of the public in it. Because we put them out there and want to get some feedback before the board at another meeting will take up a possible action on that or make revisions and then take further action, so just wanted to give you a heads up on that. I think it would be just helpful to know how many in the room are here for item A, which is the cannabis draft ordinance. So we've got three people in the room for that, four in the room for that. And let me just look at participants online. Which I think is mostly staff, so primarily, there might, there's a few online that might be here for either of them. And then hands for floodplain, so, okay, great. So, so it's kind of, you know, we've got a number here, but it was, so I think if it's, we should follow probably the item is listed on the, on here, because some people may be joining later, knowing that this was the first topic was going to be cannabis. And so with that, I guess, I would just like to open it up to members of the public, we'll start with in-room comments and then I'll move to those online, you can raise your hand if you want online, we will get to you. And if you know how to raise your hand or type a message to Jacqueline, if you're having issues. And then I would just, people request that their comments be kept to about two minutes. Just so we have a number of people and a lot of big issues, obviously, that we have to talk about tonight, so and state your name and address. Any other help, help from the board here, no, is that fine, we'll proceed.
People are having, so I'm shutting off my flashlight here. People are having trouble finding the link to the public hearing, so I was hopeful that we can post that or something. Some reason it's not on the agenda, I guess, the actual, this is hybrid, right?
Yeah, it's hybrid and it was, it's through, if you go to the town website and go to the calendar for tonight, public hearing.
It's in the calendar.
Yes, you gotta click on the calendar. And then download agenda.
Should be posted to the side of the calendar as well.
On the agenda center, I guess was the concern, so.
I will say that we're, we're in the, literally in the middle, middle transitioning to a new format, which is going to be better in the long run for the Agenda Center. And so I'm wondering.
And it's not here, it's not on the website calendar, nor is it in the Agenda Center.
Click on, click on this, though, yeah. Where she can go to the actual calendar of that.
Okay, yeah, that all, that all got changed, Peggy.
Yeah, this is all literally changed today because we went over this this morning.
I can do it right now from my end.
Thanks, Jacqueline.
All right, but I'm just worried that they're, oh, yes, if you go to the full calendar. Then you go down to the 24th, click show more, we're Selectman Public Hearing, there you go, see?
Details.
And then it just takes it to the same thing we were just at.
It was there this morning because we went through this whole thing this morning, but they are in the middle of.
Yeah, I kept getting all the email notifications even if I.
They're going over to the new system, they, they launched, of course. Okay. Um, Jacqueline, you can do that, you can add it?
Yeah, just give me one second, I'm doing it right now.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll leave time again, it, you know, there's plenty of time for people if they get on late to, to make their public comments, so I apologize to obviously, they're not online yet because they weren't able to get access to it. But why don't we start with comments in the room on the cannabis and with that, I just raise your hand and we'll go around the room. Hey, please, if you could stand up so that everybody could hear you well and then state your name and address.
My name is Steve Levine, I'm at 146 Janus C Lane here in Wellingly Town of Madison, one of the nice things about Madison, when we moved down here was that people tended to keep to themselves, but now we're into everybody's business, so along those lines. I don't mind anybody getting into my business, I'd just like for them to be informed. I've been a daily cannabis consumer since I was 17. I was introduced to it in the living room of Brookline Massachusetts Police Lieutenant's home by his twin sons, who I've known since kindergarten. Now cannabis straightened out my thinking and I, I know there are people in this room know my involvement in this town. I was heavily involved with the schools. I was there when I was supposed to be doing what I was supposed to be, built and operated my own businesses, retired at 53. No small accomplishment in and of itself. Fact of the matter is what we need to be focusing on relative to cannabis is not isolating our kids from our parents. I know too many children in this town who have, I should say, have grown up in this town and have been to my home after my children had found cannabis involved. And I opened up to them about my experience only to find out that the smoking of one in the house and they were smoking at the other and neither one of us knew anything about it. Post that time of introducing ourselves to each other, literally. Communication open, we talked to each other like we've never talked before, but unfortunately also I find myself parenting other children, not children, young adults, 30-year-olds, 20, 8-year-olds and, and on and on. My point is this, we're so concerned about a policy of isolating plants that has never been proven to be dangerous, has never been proven to be lethal, as a matter of fact, there's no documented case of anyone of smoking them to death, and yet we allow the sale of alcohol in town, and yet you can walk into CVS and pick up any medication that we know will kill you, it's ridiculous, we're not living in the 70s anymore. I'm a living example of it's not going to kill you, and by the way, I said I was 67, I think I'm doing pretty good, all right?
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comment, I will, would like to just highlight the fact that this is about retail sales, not use, it's, it's illegal, it's legal use in the state of Connecticut, so, yeah, so. Thank you, anybody else would like to share a comment, yeah, please, if you could stand up and state your name and address? And let me your comments to two minutes, thanks, yeah.
My son, unfortunately, I won't, you know, this after he had a great stomach for your care, that once and all the rest of him, left to college and discovered very a lot at first, but honestly, that part wasn't so bad, it wasn't a problem. So I was very angry during COVID, and there was open access to alcohol, as my son was struggling with it. And trust me, my daughter, I got in this other direction, first she met a guy who was growing cannabis, they had a business, he has a business. So I had suddenly had to question this aspect of what is cannabis, in its COVID perspective, and I might have this parent which obviously is a branch of talent, we thought all goes about to keep this away from everything, and I realized that's very, very naive perspective, I think. Because we're not going to be isolating it, and I think having a healthy attitude with something which now is ambitious. I prescribe herbals to people, not cannabis, but I mean, we exemplify the herbs in our lives as an act of life. So I think when you talk about retail sales, I'll get back to your point, retail sales, or microcultures. My daughter definitely has perspective on it because small farmers can things become, of the large corporations. The people who have the money to pay for the license, the people who have the money, they tend to like pharmaceutical type giant corporations that are taking over that business, so you've got your fairly, whatever you have in this. So I think it's reasonable, I don't know if Madison will be the place this happens, but I think it's reasonable to make that business available to people who are genuine farmers who want to, you know, have good soil, good agricultural methods, judgment methods, which is best product they have, really focused on that as opposed to to see this business and making meaningful money.
Thank you for your comment. Just give me one second, I'm trying to figure out. I think that we, the, it got reposted.
It did, it's out there.
And they somehow.
And somebody's already asked.
Okay, all right, okay, good, all right, thank you, I'm like trying to multitask here, but with that, of course, as we, you know, I just want to comment again, for those who've joined us, we are transitioning to a, a new and improved Agenda Center that's going to be easier to find links and things, but unfortunately, it looks like there was some technical glitches today because they just literally launched this this morning, so, yes, please state your name and your address, please.
I strongly support the prohibition of retail cannabis. On the basis of our locality to I-95, we don't want Madison to be dropped into purchase marijuana or cannabis. Also, the location schools, I thought, I was taken by an article in a newspaper that said about Madison being such an extremely orientated town, and I really believe that. I think that any proximity of this product to kids or to I-95 brings a heightened risk to Madison, in addition to that, it hasn't been proven that marijuana or cannabis increases crime rate, but it has been proven that DUI road traffic accidents do dramatically increase where cannabis is made legal in the town and it's available.
All right, thank you. Any other cannabis comments, yes, please?
Well, I'm against this, that's all I want to say on that. But police is just July the 1st, throwing your own in your, your house. What?
Yeah, the state regulation, yeah.
If you read the paper, well, we rented this house and I just have 100 plants in this house. So you're only gonna have, you're only gonna have like three plants, a hundred and times.
So I think, yeah, I, I think that in, in terms of the state, any, any this would be something that's allowable under, under the state law that was passed, and so that would be, the police would be responsible for enforcement, we don't know. Well, it would be town police would have to enforce any laws that the state of Connecticut passed, so. Yeah, well, I don't know the details, if you have some specific questions, if you email my office, I'd happy to get actual answers directly about how that would happen, I don't know currently, but that's not something the town can actually create an ordinance or prohibit, that's state law. Tonight, we're just talking about retail establishments for zoning regulations and for micro cultivation facilities, so growing plants in a commercial setting, that's what the topic is tonight. Those are the things that the town can actually regulate, but we cannot regulate what the state has allowed through the laws that it's passed. Any other public comment, like I said, my email's on the website, so feel free to send me an email and I'll try to get you specific answers to your questions.
Peggy, we can't hear people, can you have them step up to the owl, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay, so this is our microphone here, so if you are in the back, you're probably okay, but just in case, just so people don't get here.
If they can identify themselves.
Yeah, you, name and address is required for the record, so.
My name is Bob Carpenter, Halfway Lane, 46 Halfway Lane, I'd like to second, you've got a great accent. I would just second his comments, I totally agree with that, and to sort of be in opposition to first comment was, you know, I grew up smoking pot for many years and it definitely is not a good thing to have around town, to have around kids, to encourage and for the town to be the portrait of let's smoke pot, to me is not the kind of town I want associated with, so that's why I oppose the idea.
Thank you. Well, let me see if I can get everybody in, we, anybody else have a comment to make on the draft cannabis ordinance in the room? And then we're going to go online and then we can do some closing comments, so no one in the room else, okay? So now for people online, I'll let Jacqueline raise you up to make your comment, and I apologize once again for those who joined us late, there was an issue with the link. But it looks like we have a number of people have joined, so if you want to do your little hand waving, we can raise you up and you can make a comment.
All right, Susan, yep, Susan Glance, I'm going to unmute.
Okay, and just a reminder, the state your name and address as well as keep it to under two minutes, please.
Susan Glance, 682 Green Hill. I just would like to find out, I, I was unable to find the draft ordinance. So I just was looking on, on the website and I couldn't find it at all, so I would like to be able to read that.
So it was part of the Agenda Center, it was all there today and somehow, right when this meeting started, it all evaporated, so it's been available for the last several weeks, but I will, Jacqueline will double check again why that was removed. We've, we're in the, in the middle of a technology change here that happened today and evidently that's one of the things that got messed up. So if you Google it.
Not Google, but rather in the search bar on the town website, Madison Cannabis Proposed Ordinance, some people, it's posted.
Okay, so if you want to just go to the Google search on the website and it's, it'll come up under Matt, Madison Cannabis Proposed Ordinance.
I tried that, but I'll try again, thank you.
Okay, she, and apologies for that, it's, it's quite lengthy. Or no, that isn't actually the floodplain ordinance. Any other hands raised for our, from members attending via Zoom?
No hands.
No hands, I'll do one more call here in the room, we can allow a second comment if you would like to, and then I'll go back to, and then we'll.
Steve Levine, 146 Janus C Lane. Growing cannabis is not growing cucumbers. You're not going to have this influx of people growing hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of plants and distributing pounds and pounds and pounds of flowers, it doesn't work that way. Cannabis is grown in a tent with expensive LED ultraviolet lights, they're extremely sensitive to temperature, moisture, lights. You name it, it will kill it or ruin it, so a lot of the concerns that people have are just beyond my belief, they're just not rational, it's like we're living with grief or madness again, we're not there, we are definitely not there, and by the way, as, as towns have learned over the years, you can be a dry town that just means all of the kids in your town are going to get in their cars and they're going to drive two towns, three towns, four towns over to get what they want to get. Be logical, be rational, I'm all for regulation in, at the retail level, I don't think that there should be an open market environment, medical patients have a priority, so there should be there should be flour available for them for their needs, before the recreational needs, but no one should be able to walk in and walk out with a couple of ounces of anything, and that's not daily need, it doesn't make sense.
Okay, thank you for your comments, any other in the room comments? Sure.
And Hannah, again, I, I wanted to also, again, echo you saying, I mean, I thought of two things while people were talking, one is talking about kids should not have this, and, and I mean, a lot of them allow kids to have this, 21 over, right? So I'm hoping we would be starting with kids, if they have a dispensary or properly rich, regulated facility, which a shop should be, right? I had another experience with a friend of mine, he was 37, he had, he was a former vet and he had got cancer from this experience. The process, the breastfeeding stuff, and he, you know, I used to admit this publicly, I used to help them to access the cannabis that he needed, that was Dr. Spad, but which most people can't afford, honestly, and they have to get through the mental system, it's so expensive, it's not covered by insurance. So there are people who need the medical and who can't afford to pay for the medical stuff like this. And if it was available in a well-regulating system, there are a lot of people in our town who have medical needs that are not afforded, which they can't, and they're buying it obviously anyway, and my friend, unfortunately suffered fungal infection from exposure to something, something that's studied by the street, which probably would have existed.
Thank you for your comment. One more comment and then I know we're getting the second round, so, yeah, it's okay. So we will, in our next meeting, be talking about the feedback that we're getting from the public, we've had other discussions about this, and then I also want to comment that we did a public survey that we had over 900 residents respond to and the results of those surveys will also be showing at the board meeting that follows the public hearing. And then there'll be another meeting where we would actually have further discussion and make possible amendments to the proposed ordinance, so the, the feedback from the committee that had been chaired by Bruce Wilson, there had not been as much public interaction, I think, more just not as much attention was given to the issue, which is why the board then chose to take this forward. Draft an ordinance with a position in it and then also do a, a survey, so we would have more information to kind of react, so the public could react to something. Uh, no, tonight, after this, so we, we're going to adjourn this meeting, the public hearing, we're also going to hear about the floodplain ordinance, so there'll be some comments from people on that issue. Then we'll adjourn to a meeting and then we will go through and show the survey results, and then we will also post them, they're just PowerPoint slides, but we'll post those on the website that hopefully people can see tomorrow. And, and so the public will have an opportunity to review that and, and send in their thoughts once they see that, so I noticed, I'll, I'll do one more request online, we'll be done with public comment in here. Let me go online real quick, some more hands are raised, we'll go back to the room and then we'll close out.
We have six minutes.
Well, so, well, no, our meeting is scheduled for whenever we adjourn the public hearings, so there's no time. No, we have it, we set it up because we knew both of these would have a lot of public discussion, so, yeah.
We needed to start seven.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think it was noticed.
Yep, it is, Joan Walker's hand is raised.
Okay, so let's take some more online comments and then we'll come back to the room again and then we'll close it out.
So I'm Joan Walker, 39, Stepping Stone Lane, my comment would be that if you do decide to allow a dispensary in town, that the, the tax revenue that we would be getting as a town be focused for education and of our children and, and our adults, quite frankly, on the positive, negative side effects of, of cannabis, I think that it, you know, we have and I, I have to agree with Mike on this, we've got how many liquor stores in town? There are people that prefer to utilize cannabis rather than drink liquor. This is now legal in Connecticut and I think that to show proper use of cannabis as we do proper use of alcohol as adults is something, as something, an example that we should be setting for our children. So my big thing would be, though, if it does go forward, that the revenues stick, you know, get, I don't know if we can lockbox it or not, but really focus as much into Madison Youth and Family Services and an educational program that was originally called MAID, and I'm, I'm not sure if it's still there or if it has been folded into that group, so that's my.
Okay, thank you for your comment. No other hands seem to be raised online, I know we had one other individual here, if you'd like to state your name and address and, and make your comment, you're welcome to. You'd stand up because it's hard, believe it or not, so. Yeah.
Eventually, so you're going to have an ordinance, then is it going to be put to vote by the public?
That's something the board has talked about in the past, I mean, typically ordinance don't go to referendum, it's unusual, unusual to do that, I think part of the reason we did the survey as well as having this public hearing was to get feedback from the public for the board to make a decision. But we will be talking about that at our meeting and if, there's a possibility of doing that, but I think it's a question of, does it rise to the occasion of needing a public vote? And that's where our board will talk about that.
I'm going to put my two cents in, I would say, needs to go public.
Hey, with that, anybody, any other, final, final comments, last comment on the cannabis ordinance?
This gentleman there, you know. Gives you a perfect picture, everything's rosy, but for every person like him, there's 10 bad ones. And all you got to do is read the newspaper every day. Illegal this, illegal that, people shot these people here, these people have shot these people here, these people were speeding down the road. There's always going to be somebody that's going to stretch the law. And we got to enforce it. He's got his viewpoints, I got my viewpoints, Joe Blow over here has got their viewpoints, she has her viewpoint. It's gotta be, you know, I don't know what the right word is, which, you know, it's gotta be police. If it ever got to that point. Mark my word, every one person, there's going to be 10, five, four, three people are going to try to get around the law.
Thank you very, for your comments. And so with that, I guess, we will close out the public hearing portion for the cannabis, draft cannabis ordinance. I'll just remind anybody online, you're welcome to still email the Board of Selectmen on the website with your comments and we will certainly review those, we're going to talk about the survey results that might come after the discussion on the floodplain ordinance. Those results will also be published tomorrow on the website, so people can review them, what the survey results were. On cannabis, yeah, so that'll be available on the website as well, tonight we'll, we'll present it, we haven't, we just got the results today, so I have some summaries and then we'll have the full results available on the website tomorrow for, for people to look at. So with that, I guess, then why don't we move on to the next item on the agenda B, which is reviewing a draft floodplain ordinance? And, and I think we can start maybe doing the same process that, you know, if you are in the room, obviously, I know we have a number of people here, if you could raise your hand and then you can review your comments and just keep it to two minutes, please, and state your name and address, and with that.
Hi, I'm Eric Lawrence, I went to Middle Beach Road, first one just. Hi, I'm Eric Lawrence. Uh, I'm in, uh, went to Middle Beach Road, uh, first one, just thank the Board of Selectmen for your efforts over the last two years. A couple of years ago, we formed, uh, an ad hoc committee, they were a short line, they had hundreds of responses to us, and I know you've been brave and accessed us, we met, we've been engaged with Scott, uh, Bruce, they've voted you on the proponent, uh, that Sally spoke with you, that we love, so. I was a neighbor for many years of John, he doesn't listen, I feel like. Anyway, your efforts are really, so just appreciated, so. There's, there's a few things in the existing ordinance we encourage additional, uh, concessions to, if one has lots to figure out. The use of the assessed valuation of a property for determining the fifty percent that can be spent during a first phase of a phase or longer process if you're subject to the lookback period, which I think I commend the thank you for keeping it in one ear, I think that's, that's very sensible, and I know it wasn't necessarily. I don't understand, um, bottom line issue, excuse me, which is, um, using a professional appraiser is specifically identified as a process. And I have the language here, I'm not gonna waste time reading, but I know you've seen it as well. And of our neighboring towns, um, Branford, Gilford, uh, Westbrook, Old Saybrook, Haven, I'm sure there are others, all effectively either, either permit or, or require to use the professional appraiser. And you, if you look at the process of trying to work on a house that, that requires excessive renovation, uh, first of all, an appraised value would be well, well, based on that, and, but the appraised value would typically be, uh, what they assess that, but if it is, it doesn't impact, it doesn't. It doesn't require additional resources to be committed by. My bottom line issue is, if, if it doesn't cost down in Madison, it makes it more difficult for residents to maintain their properties. Why have that addition? So I would just ask that you spend some additional time thinking about that issue and whether there's potentially a path to saying, let's use an appraiser like many of our neighboring towns do, which is not in any way in conflict with either the state law or with FEMA regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other hands raised on floodplain ordinance? Okay, please, yeah.
My name is Brooke Chamberlain. I'm a longtime fifty-plus-year resident of Madison. Uh, I live at Fort, uh, Forty Prospect Street in Madison. I'd just like to make a comment or two on the concept and definition of substantial improvement. Uh, there is a, a, a definition in the draft regulations, uh, which, uh, paraphrasing says, uh, the words appraising to be interpreted in a manner, to be interpreted in a manner to give the most reasonable application to regulations. And, uh, uh, we'd like to encourage the board and to encourage town officials to apply floodplain regulations in the most homeowner-friendly way as possible. The key point is to, um, not discourage homeowners from making good and proper repairs and maintaining their, their, their homes with good order. So in that spirit, you might ask town councilor, you might consider removing the word repair from the definition in, uh, substantial improvement. Or add an exemption of normal repairs to the definition of substantial improvement. The whole idea is to encourage homeowners to maintain their homes and keep them in as good a, uh, repair and condition as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, any other, uh, yes, please?
Hi, my name is, I'm a resident of Madison for the last four years, so, so, Brooks here. And then fifteen Texas Road, I too would like to thank the Board of Selectmen profusely for all your efforts and work. I know that this is a huge, um, undertaking. Uh, one of the things I would like to just, I want to focus on one area, which is the M L T section of floodplain ordinance. But first, I'd like to encourage the board to ask council, I believe it's uptick, or uptick, Spalency, to, to provide to you and to the public a redline version of what they started with, which I quote was the floodplain ordinance, if there's not a document, whatever they started with should be redlined, so that you can be sure to see where definitions change, where sections change. And I personally, as a member of the public, would like to see that as well. But in terms of my specific comment on the cap with the shoreline, um, committee that we formed, I'd like to say that we're very happy that you stayed with one year lookback. That provides material advantage to Madison's real estate market. It also allows people to maintain or repair their older homes. I'd ask that you consider a major tweak, and that is to take out the misdemeanor violation that, uh, section that exists in the current floodplain ordinance. I believe that is extremely puzzling that that was ever part of that ordinance. There's no such penalty under FEMA laws or regulations. In case of FEMA, they know that the town may cite the structure, the violation according to Section Six of the National Flood Insurance Act, which then allows NFIP to deny, deny that owner access to insurance under the plan. So I believe the town should not be able to impose criminal penalties. As a lawyer, I don't really understand the concept. That's a prosecutorial function before criminal court anyway. And in terms of other towns and nearby towns, they do not impose criminal penalties. The other section is, um, I'm concerned about the twenty-five-dollar-a-day vacation or fine fee that's currently under the books. I believe that's excessive. If you think about the standards narrowly we're likely to face when the floodplain ordinance would take in, we'd be talking about maybe a homeowner who's done like a replacement of a roof. Like it gets hit with a hurricane, and then suddenly they're supposed to immediately somehow get the contractor to give them an estimate, when the contractor probably is not available, they've got all these hundreds of people that have damage. And they're suddenly facing a twenty-dollar-a-day fine or fee, whatever you wanna call it, and they're supposed to somehow raise their house, and we have estimates from the Turner Greenwood family of the almost eight hundred thousand dollars which was made, uh, several years ago. So I think it puts a homeowner in an untenable position where they're supposed to somehow come up with a contractor who's available, who's fielding hundreds of calls, and they still have to get into this. So if there's any kind of, uh, the, or fine imposed, it needs to be reasonable, and we need to think about when that would begin and what. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Um, any other hands raised, yeah? Room?
My name is Dee Dee Boyd. I live at ten six, Austin Post Road in the winter, and in the summer, we live at forty-three Middle Beach Road. We also own another cottage at ninety-nine Middle Beach Road. Um, both of these are historic cottages. Um, one is dates from eighteen fifty, the other from eighteen sixty-five. My husband and I purchased these cottages into a variety of regions. Um, forefront for us was preserving history. We knew if we didn't buy these houses, they would be torn down, and all of a sudden, we would have very large, oversized, modern homes towering over the houses next door. They were structurally sound, we had that checked out, obviously, ahead of time. We love the magic of Madison, we love the magic of the shoreline. In between Island Avenue and East Ward, there are nine seasonal cottages still. We are the only town on the shoreline of Connecticut, from New York to Rhode Island, that still has a large stock of historic and vintage cottages that in many cases have been maintained for four or five generations by the same woman. Um, I am a member of Saber Shoreline. I got involved with this three years ago when the floodplain ordinance, uh, was in front of the CRC, and it was happening in the middle of the winter, and I was deeply concerned for my neighbors who are not here and are in Florida. Then I started reaching out to them, one by one, saying, do you know this is going on? Um, our group feels very strongly that you guys have done an amazing job dealing with something very, very difficult, as had Mr. Daniel there, who I've come to know intimately through our process of restoring our first cottage over the course of four years. Um, we feel very strongly in our group, the three issues that Larry, Kim, and Brooks have addressed are very important. Allowing the homeowner to choose to have a licensed, a state of Connecticut licensed appraiser, pay for that themselves if they choose so, to, um, to give the appraised value of the structure itself, which is the only thing that applies to more regulars. Um, we feel that it's, it's, um, in line with the other towns, and it's certainly encouraged by FEMA to do that. Um, secondly, we believe that routine maintenance should be excluded from substantial improvement. Um, if somebody needs to replace a board on their porch, because one board is rotten, should that be considered part of their number, or is that just basically neighborliness? To make sure that your houses look pretty for all of the walkers and bikers and car people that go up and down Middle Beach, Middle Beach West, and all the shoreline throughout the summer, along with the bikers. Um, and finally, we believe very strongly that the criminal penalty should be completely eliminated from this topic. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Um, yes, more comments?
Steve Levine, uh, forty-six, Genesee Lane. Um, I spent thirty-five years doing high-end residential design build. Uh, there's nothing sitting at existing height on the shoreline that anyone could put ten cents into, and I don't care about the future of the real estate market. Water will seek its own level. Sea level is rising. It will overtake the properties that we, uh, place all of our bonding hope into. I don't know what percentage of our tax base based along the shoreline, which within, I don't know, thirty, forty years will be underwater. So I don't know how all of this thinking plays into what we're doing with a one-year, uh, holdoff on anything. Um, we gotta be looking at three hundred. Talk about historic homes. The whole country is four hundred and fifty years old in a, what? Twenty-five thousand, two million-year-old world? Don't we think a lot of ourselves, when we say anything that we've done is historic? None of it is relevant today. When we shouldn't be rebuilding what didn't work before, we need to find a way to build what will work in the future. And all of these conversations about how we're gonna preserve people's sound is contradicting the reality that water is gonna rise. It really is, and we can't stop it, no matter what we want to do.
Thank you. Um, and I guess we'll continue with the room, and then we do wanna, there are some hands raised online as well, so.
Saber Shoreline, I very appreciate the work. I also thank you for continuing to call your step back or look back for those of us that care to make renovations to our homes in that floodplain area. I too would like to suggest that repairs should be considered, if they have to be replaced, then, you know, we have the recourse then to make that kind of investment. And, and that's essential. So I think that's separate events, substantial improvement, for, for other personal preference. Um, and likewise, I don't believe that the threat of going to jail for violating the one year book that these claims may be appropriate, I respect them, also that, but potential risk of prison, of course, that seems unjust.
Thank you. Uh, okay, with that then, um, let me just go online, and we'll have a chance to come back in the room if other people wanna follow up comments. Um, so Jack, when I'll turn it over to you? All right, first is Fran Brady.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, yep.
Great, thank you. Uh, this is Francis Brady. I live at one oh eight Genesee Lane, Madison. Um, could you help, uh, my comment is focused on public versus private properties. Could you help me understand, perhaps later in the meeting, that if the majority, given that the majority of Daniel Hand High School is in the Zone AE floodplain, uh, and as well as portions of the town buildings off of Duck Hole Road in the, in the town campus, they're all in floodplain AE. Will there be practical ramifications uh, if future renovations are needed there to the, to the tax base? I, I think I know the answer. I just wanted you to address that in your comments later on. Thank you.
I'll just make one quick comment. It applies to all property, private or public. I don't think all of Daniel Hand, there's a small portion that's in the flood zone, and the town follows the floodplain ordinance, just like a, a normal resident would. Uh, okay, we have another hand raised, I see?
John Ford.
Okay. Okay, state your name and address, please. Can you hear us, Mr. Ford? We can't hear you, unfortunately. So I don't know, you don't appear to be muted on our end.
Is your mic commuted?
Doesn't look like it is.
I can move to, to the next one, then we can come back to him.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Um, Matous? On, who else speak?
Okay.
Uh, hi, this is Mathew Shishak. Um, I live at seventeen Texas Road, uh, here in Madison. Um, my, my general comment is I, I supported changes that were submitted here, um, by the SOS to the policy. Um, I do agree that we should be amending the definition of the SI. Um, and I, I do think that giving an option to the homeowners, uh, to appraise, um, their, their properties on their own, um, is, uh, would, would be a crucial change, right, and, and helping us uh, not to make substantial, uh, sub- substantial, um, capital expenditures whenever we make other improvements to, to our homes. Um, I would like to say that pretty much, I, I would support anything, right, that, um, does not force homeowners, or doesn't put a substantial financial burden some on them, uh, as it does have an impact on the, the real estate market, it does have an impact on how attractive, uh, the properties are here in town, uh, to prospective buyers from outside. Um, and, and, uh, in general, though, though we might main, main concern here, um, right? I think that asking homeowners in general to, um, make, uh, substantial capital improvements, uh, necessary under FEMA is, is financially too, too burdensome. Uh, it could potentially force a lot of people out of town, or specifically the homeowners on, on the shoreline or in other, uh, flood zones here.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think we have another hand raised. Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your name and address.
This is Hillary Baker, thirty-five Tuxess Road. Um, I'm relatively new to the area. We, we're coming from Atlanta. Um, we are the houses that, you know, in, in order to have any kind of renovation, we were the ones who did the full raising, renovation, and all the things that, um, some like and some don't, but we loved the city and the town, and we wanted to be here, and that was our only choice, is to, to raise it. That being said, based on his comment about financial burden, yeah, that was a big financial burden to us. But it's worth it because we wanna be here. However, for the neighbors that, you know, may need a repair or two, which I'm looking at a house right now that could really use some repair, um, I support Kim and all, all the rest of my neighbors with, um, being able to, you know, repair and keep a house current and not face, you know, some crazy, uh, penalties. And because that is right, that we're, we're having storms and, you know, people are having damage, and um, they need to be able to respond quickly, because for me, who has spent so much to, to improve this house, um, I want the neighborhood to obviously, to be able to. to be able to maintain their houses as well.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments.
I'll try John Ford again.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. John Ford, can you hear us? No. He might be. Yeah, probably lost lost interest with the extensive comments. But okay, so, you know, and I guess we have, so I'm just one last call for online. And it looks like no hands are raised. All right, and we have a few hands here in the room that'll go to these, which are primarily second comments. So if we could just keep them to a minimum and then, and I know you had raised your hand before, so if you'd like to go ahead and do your comment.
And Hammond, I'm not with the organization. But I didn't happen to live on the same street. And I'm eleven, happens to. I want to say two things. One, my personal experience, we bought our house in ninety four, paid two hundred fifty thousand. And we realized within a couple of days that town was going to like have us take care of our entire water system or turn on our water. So that was our first experience with winterizing. We didn't know that, but we went past. Our fault, we were twenty four with them. So we had two kids and lived in a situation where linoleum was falling off the walls and stuff. And we had a tiny downstairs bathroom. That was two by four. But we couldn't afford to renovate. Finally, in time, so we finally got around to it, but our kids were about six and eight. And we came to the town and we said, you want to get two bathrooms at work and a kitchen that isn't like we make the cobbies all connected. And they said, sure. It you have fifty percent of the value of your home, so when you're allowed to renovate or you have to raise it at the time only going to cost thirty thousand, it was going out. Well, we couldn't afford thirty thousand. So we said, we'll just do fifty percent. And at the time, they said your house was, I think it was six hundred thousand. So he said, wait, we could do three hundred thousand worth of renovations. And they're like, no, that's your property. You can only renovate structure, the value of the structure. And I remember at that time thinking that was like crazy that our house, that we've been paying taxes on six and seven or whatever, eventually nine hundred thousand. But then our house is only worth twenty. And all the considerations about what we're allowed to do and not allowed to do are based on under twenty, which seemed really little compared to what we're actually paying tax on. So we did that and we just minimized what we could do. And we did do it over two separate one year periods, which seemed crazy to separate your construction into two separate years and live in half the kitchen for a year. But that's the way we had to do it to get around the law, which is what is basically people are forced to do, even with the one year look back. But I mean, instead of that, I believe that looking at the actual value of the assessed values of property makes sense because the structures in those situations are not so argued anymore. And it's really hard to get a workman, a kitchen for less than ten thousand dollars. You know, you know, and you would have to do that if you have a kitchen and two bathrooms, you know. It's hard to do that for less than sixty thousand dollars if people tell you your structure is under twenty. It's just kind of impossible. So that was our experience. And my other thought is when we're talking, Steve referred to like looking at the general position and time and community as opposed to us as individuals. And I think that's important. And I think it's from the town's perspective, you could look at our other infrastructure and how it helps to prevent or not prevent damage from floods. Our house survived big flood, whatever it was, two thousand and twelve. And I watched it work the way it was supposed to because we were told we had to put baffles on our houses underneath. So that if the flood came in, it could go through the baffle out the other side of the house, not get the house blowed worse than and it worked. Like we had, we had six inches of sand under our house after the big flood. And the water was, people were swimming on our street, but our house didn't get any water. And I think it has to do with the way our street, however it worked, our house worked, even though we didn't raise it. So I think we give more thought to how we get water off the street quickly when we have a flood like copper sewage or whatever drainage systems. And how when one house is raised, how that might affect the neighbors. Think about water flowing up from elevated property now it's going down onto the neighbors who beforehand were okay. So we consider that.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I know we had a few more in the room. Go ahead.
I'm Dee Dee Stone, Boston Post Road. Along the line of what you answered, I feel that aside from the flooding ordinance, I would very much like to see the town start addressing infrastructure to help mediate the wave action. I know that when the repair was done after Sandy and Irene, it was not done according to the Army Corps of Engineers recommendations. It was done less than that. I know that there is a burn out there in the water, which can be seen overhead by drone that was built nineteen forty four after the hurricane of nineteen thirty eight. It was repaired in nineteen fifty eight and has not been repaired since. The burn was placed in order to help mediate the wave action hitting areas of the road where the road goes right up onto the water. I'd like to see the town moving forward to look at ways that they can possibly help to mediate the wave action, which leads to a lot of the flooding areas like Tuxus with their drainage systems, et cetera, in that most vulnerable area there. Madison clearly embraces their image as a shoreline paradise, the magic of Madison. I spent, I'm looking at the website, looking at some publications and sixty percent of the images used in everything shows vintage cottages along the shoreline. And really, that's an image that Madison embraces along with the varied other areas of our town. And I just want to make it clear that I think it's important that moving forward, especially with funding that may be available from the federal government, look at ways to help mediate the wave action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick comments on one is that when Brooks was talking, he was talking about exempting from the definition of substantial improvements. Repair is made in ordinary course, building maintenance. To that, I would like to add that it's really important for us I can tweak the draft ordinance to exempt cost of improvements made to resist and reduce the cost of potential flood damage. Things like hurricane windows. When I look at my house, I'm talking about hurricane windows, I shouldn't be worried about going to fifty percent standard where I have to raise up at a cost of seven or seven hundred thousand dollars. That's going to deter me from putting a hurricane windows, which could really have a great impact. My parents down toward it did that. And it saved their house during many hurricane hurricanes down in Long Island. The other thing I'd like to just touch with what Dee Dee was saying. I'm speaking individually, not speaking on behalf of those resilience commission. But one of the things that I've been working on recently is identifying individual projects and trying to get federal funding for places like Texas Roads. That I'd like to add, my dad had tremendous success with getting federal funding to tune about eight hundred thousand dollars for sweeping down Hitchens Island using really great new technology, things like over structures which break up the wave action and still things like speed bumps to keep the sand from flowing back to the beach. And also they had dredges that he would be able to watch right before he died. But added about five miles of beach length at Hitchens Island by about two hundred feet wide. So I think the town should not be overly pessimistic. There are ways of dealing with this coastal rising. We're not deniers on coastal. I'm sorry, I should say Russian line. Many, we are fully recognized, you know, that oceans are rising. But I think we should also be hopeful and we should be direct home means towards the owners. Thank you.
Thank you. I notice we have one more hand raised online and then I think we might wrap up the public hearing. So Jaclyn, we'll go to the final comment online.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, please state your name and address, please, for the record.
This is John Kislak. We have the house at ninety eight Middle Beach Road. I have been there for more than a dozen years. Of course, the house has been there for more than a hundred years as have most of the houses along the shoreline. They, the owners of those houses, without any rules, have been good stewards and kept the houses maintained and beautiful and the iconic view that, as Dee Dee just pointed out, are on the postcards from a hundred years ago and are still the places where people come and park to walk around our town and maybe get a cup of coffee on a Saturday morning. I know because I see them parading, parading by our house all day on sunny weekends in the summer. I would like to reiterate what has been said. I too am on the steering committee of Save Our Shoreline. First of all, Madam Share and members of the board, thank you for the efforts you've made. Thank you for what you have done so far. Thank you for helping us diffuse what was a very heated and difficult issue some time ago. You've done yeoman's work and we are appreciative of it. And the one thing I would add is that to what has been said, that we would hope that that you will inquire of the town council how liberal we can be, you can be in the ordinance in exempting certain kinds of expenses that must be in building permits, but may not need to be included in the calculation. Things such as repair or replacement of septic tanks that may be leave, may not be working properly and maybe putting raw sewage into into Long Island Sound. Things such as electric systems which are not up to code, which may in some cases be almost a hundred years old. And updating those electric systems as a safety and sounds issue, as a safety issue for the residents, certainly something the town would like to see happen and shouldn't try to put impediments in. Perhaps, as was mentioned, hurricane windows, insulation or perhaps even installation of heat pumps would be the kinds of things if they could be excluded that the town might want to exclude if it was possible. So with the last link, my thanks again, I'm finished. Thank, bye bye.
All right, thank you. So I guess with that hearing, seeing no other hands raised, I guess we'll call to close the public hearing on the floodplain ordinance now. And I welcome the public to stay for the board's